Okay, I hereby call this City of Boardman City Council meeting. Order and I call it to order. We'll scan and do the flag salute please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We proceed to a roll call.
Counselor Drago.
Here. Here.
Counselor Norton.
Here.
Counselor Pearson.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Do not see Paul Beagle in attendance.
No.
No, he, yeah.
Counselor Prophet.
Here.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Here. Okay, so we have established that we have a court. So we'll go right into our special hearing. Opening of the public hearing. This public hearing on appeal, AP twenty-two dash zero zero four is called to order. Appeal AP twenty-two dash zero zero four, City of Boardman, holder of right-of-way, First John two fourteen LLC and Jonathan Tallman, appellant. The property is described as right-of-way adjacent to tax lots thirty-one hundred, thirty-two oh four, thirty-two oh nine, thirty-two oh six, and thirty-two oh one of Assessors map four and two five one zero and tax lots four hundred and four oh three of Assessors map four and two five one one. The area is zone service center and is in the southeast quadrant of the Port of Marlboro interchange. The appellant is against zoning permit ZP twenty-one dash zero six eight, which approves the construction of road within right-of-way dedicated for road and related purposes. Criteria for the appeal are found in the BDC Chapter four point one, Types of Applications and Review Procedures. Content of the hearing. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. We will have a staff report. Public testimony in the following order. The applicant, any testimony in support of the application, any testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, the applicant's rebuttal if any. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the city council has a specific question. The city council may ask questions to of staff, after which the city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. The city council may make a final decision tonight or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date you will receive. Testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Is there anybody on the Zoom that is that wants to have testimony?
Mayor, how do I identify that in the chat?
Oh, copy that, thank you.
Yes.
Please, if you are willing, or if you're wanting to have testimony, please write it in the chat. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. Criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the city council. Raise it or waive it. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the city council and the parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the city council to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Disclosure. Now I ask the members of the city council to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Does anyone in the audience with, okay, so I mean to any counselors wish to abstain from this hearing? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge the city counselors in partiality?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Yeah, that would be fine.
So, like I discussed with you, Mr. Mayor Kiefer, you said you don't care about the west side of the road. You also emailed me back saying, oh, you're right, I did say that, I didn't mean that. And I said, okay, let's meet up and talk. And then you said, no, we're not going to do anything. So your actions with your words go hand in hand as not caring. And with what you want to do. Wes Pearson, I said this, I emailed to you. Anything that has to do with the BCDA, the conflict of interest being Karen's boss or paid through Karen's boss, that has to be shown. Ren Prophet, your business that you work for, same thing I could think. And then also Katie Norton, does she live in the city limits anymore or does she somewhere else? These things need to be addressed because it's, it's, it's meat in his head as far as people that really do care or have a conflict, or have a conflict that looks like they are getting paid or they work for someone that is their boss and they are their boss. It's, it's, it's downright, it's just so frustrating that you people don't want to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tallman. Having hearing nothing else, we'll go right to this, or actually, yeah, we'll go to the staff report. Planning official Carla McLean will now present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Kiefer and members of the council. So the, the specific document I want to point you to this evening is the one that was emailed to you last Friday. It is identified at the top as the city council findings of fact in the matter of appeal AP twenty-two dash zero zero four and zoning permit twenty-one dash zero six eight. The applicant here is kind of, it's interesting because the applicant is the city and the city has the review authority. So we will be presenting a staff report and, and that basically means there won't be an applicant testimony. But we will attempt to answer all the questions you have from both perspectives. This happens. The appellant is First John two seventeen and Jonathan Tallman, represented by Sarah Mitchell. Again, the property spent aside that described, it is specific to the right-of-way that was dedicated to the City of Boardman, abutting the tax lot sort of been previously identified. It's area, this area is owned for commercial purposes. The specific overlay is service center, again, it's south of the interstate and east of Laurel Lane. This goes back to last fall. For this public hearing, notice was published on June seventeenth with property owner notice on the same day. And I'll get into the specifics. I think you're all aware of the background here. There is an interchange area management plan that was adopted back in two thousand and twelve in cooperation with Monal County and the Port of Laurel and was also adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission. The IMP identifies a need to address impacts to Laurel Lane south of IMP or when traffic has increased to certain levels. There was some discussion that started in two thousand and eighteen around potential updates to the IMP with changes proposed to the north side. And at that time, there were a number of people at the table, there was a lot of conversation about the need for the loop roads. And the city manager, through those conversations, said, well, this is a project the city can take on. And kind of the rest is history. We've gone through that process. The city did work diligently to obtain right-of-way on both sides of Laurel Lane. They were not successful to obtain from the Tallmans. However, right-of-way has been obtained from another landholder on the west side of Laurel Lane, but we're not pursuing construction on that side because we don't have the right-of-way. So this is a zoning permit that started with a Luba action challenging the construction, the construction issuance of the construction bid. And so we worked to issue the zoning permit, was issued back in March. Finalized in April, that was, notice was given, it was appealed. And the planning commission heard this in May. Sorry, my dates, everything's kind of running together. I try to remember these as well as I can. So tonight, in your packet and what was provided to you, there are three attachments and they're important because they kind of provide that summary of what's happened previously and how we got to where we are tonight. So one of those attachments is zoning permit twenty-one dash oh six eight. And it's, so it's attachment one, it's about six or seven pages in. In where? Well, if you've got, yeah, so when you get to the part, what's the tab it's under for them? Staff report.
It's actually, mine is under special hearing.
Mine is too.
Mine is too. Okay. I don't want the big one. That's why I really didn't want it in there. Just confuse this matters. So if you're online, if you're looking at what was emailed to you earlier today, you need to skip the first sixty-nine pages. What you want to get to is what says at the top, city council findings of fact, appeal AP twenty-two dash oh oh four slash CP twenty-one dash oh six eight.
That's on one of five. That's the number I found.
Get her for the batch, she's one of five.
No, one of five, yeah, after the land use application.
I've been on that page a couple times. Under special, is it the one under special hearings? Where, I don't have tabs. I had to give my tabs to work.
People online, it's on page five.
Page five, with the package that was, yes, yeah. So if you're online, if you're online and look at the city's website and pick up the document that says findings of fact, that's the document that I'm talking from. So on page five, thank you. Thank you. So attachment one is the actual findings of facts from when we issued the zoning approval for this. And so this was a planning official decision. And, and I'm not going to speak to this, it just does have some history and some information in it. It's how we made the determination that this is a use allowed. It is a transportation facility and improvement. The, the chapter two of our development code identifies this in table two point two point two hundred B. It allows the installation of improvements within the existing right-of-way. And this is existing right-of-way, we are.
Carla, I cannot find the page that you're on. And I've taken all the great advice and it doesn't know where we are.
Okay.
And I'm trying to catch up.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm, I'm going to keep talking and generally help you get there. So if anybody else has a question, let me know. So I'm, I'm, I'm talking a little bit to attachment one. There's a sheet that says attachment one zoning permit. So the second page of that findings of fact from that zoning permit identifies that we have the ability, that insulation of improvements within the existing right-of-way is a use allowed. We also looked at the requirements at that point. We talked about some determinations. We included in that the zoning approval itself, an attachment that identified out of the, the IMP and a figure of the, of the development project. So that's, that's an important document because that's the first item that was issued as an approval for this process to move forward. Attachment two to tonight's findings is the planning commission decision. So as I said, this decision, the decision that was issued by me was appeal to the planning commission. And so attachment two to tonight's findings is the planning commission decision. In that instance, when we received the appeal from First First John two seventeen and his attorney, Sarah Mitchell, they posited a number of questions. And so the staff reports for the planning commission basically said, we issued this zoning approval, here are the issues raised by the appellant and here's our responses to those. The planning commission held a public hearing. They reviewed that. There was testimony from the city. There was, there was testimony from the appellant. And the planning commission decision was to deny the appeal and uphold the planning official decision and issue a zoning permit. Okay? So we did a notice of decision in that instance and that was also appealed. And that is where we are tonight. So now, now we're kind of up to speed. So, but attachment three. So, so the supplemental from the attorney was a very large packet and it's the packet that's about seventy pages. That is the packet that was submitted. That is not what was attached to the findings. All of that is part of the record, but it is not, it is not specifically what we're asking you to look at and consider for this evening. That packet is available to anybody who wants to view it. It's been posted to the city's website. So tonight, again, with the appeal that was submitted, so what you're seeing in attachment three is the, the five pages that the attorney submitted that said, these are the additional, additional issues that we're raising on appeal. Okay, so we solved six or eight issues in front of the planning commission and we've got another six or eight issues that they raised that are before you tonight. So I'm going to go back to the staff reports and go back to the beginning of the, the findings of fact under consideration tonight. And I'm going to jump into those issues that have been identified. And in the in the staff report, and I worked cooperatively with Chris Crane, the city's land use attorney. So he, he goes through and we provided some general information and then we looked at the approval criteria. And some of this is redundant, but again, two point two point two hundred B provides that this is a project that is identified in the adopted transportation city plan. The city has acquired the right-of-way for both Yates Lane and Devon Loop on the east side of the Laurel Lane. Therefore, constructions of the roads is the installation of improvements with existing right-of-way. The roads are also identified in the IMP, which is part of the TSP, and they do not require further land use review. Accordingly, the city has determined that roads are permitted use in the zone. It, the, the standards further provide some yard requirements. It, and the response to that is, is that sections one and two are discretionary and may and apply generally to building and land divisions. We find again, they do not apply the proposed roadway. The roads will comply with any applicable fire and building code standards as such the standard that is before us has been met. There are transportation standards in the Boardman Development Code. It provides standards for the development of public facilities concurrent with development. And staff finds that the following standards apply to the proposed roadways. That they be created through the approval and recording of a final subdivision or partition plan or are, are provided by granted deed. All of the right-of-way that we've acquired for the loop roads in that area has all been acquired by deed. The location with the grade of all streets shall conform to the transportation system plan. The transportation system plan has identifies various road standards and road widths and right-of-way widths. We've determined that this is a neighborhood collector. And in that situation, the minimum right-of-way, the required right-of-way is sixty feet. And that is the right-of-way that has been acquired for the development of the loop roads. So this is compliant with a TSP for a neighborhood collector. There's a couple of things to consider here. The maximum grade for collectors, twelve percent. The construction plans for the roadway show the right-of-way of sixty feet and the maximum grade is four point two six percent. And those are available on the full plan sheets for the design. So the application complies with the TSP. Street right-of-ways and improvement shall conform with the widths in table three point four point one hundred. So again, it requires a minimum width of sixty feet for neighborhood collector. It is a neighborhood collector and the construction plans show a right-of-way width of sixty feet. Accordingly, the standard is met that. There's also some standards around sidewalks, planar strips, bicycle lanes, those types of things. Maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, and planar strips is a continuing obligation of the adjacent property owner. So this one, we have determined that it's intended to apply at the time of site development of the adjacent property. Something to keep in mind is that when the city made the determination to, to do this road construction project, they did so to benefit in many respects, the landowners. The IMP noted that these improvements would be made at the time of development by developers. So the city has taken on a development obligation. And in so doing, has said, but the developer is still obligated to do the additional improvements. So curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, there's a number of things that are not part of the design and are not being installed because this is, we're, we're not doing development. We're building a street. So it's, infrastructure has been installed, water and wastewater. And pavement has been laid on top of appropriate base rock. What isn't being done is gutter, sidewalks, streetlights. Those things will happen when Joe Taylor's online tonight. I will pick on Joe Taylor. When Joe Taylor comes forward with a development opportunity for his property that, that adjoins to this, these, these roads, he will be responsible for those additional development requirements for his frontage on the appropriate street. Okay, so we're not saying that those improvements will never happen. But they are not part of the infrastructure construction that the city has taken on. Those will still be requirements at the time somebody who is adjacent to this improvement develops. Okay? Sorry, sorry, Mr. Taylor for picking on me, but it just kind of worked. Centerline curve radie, the appellant is trying to identify this as a, a road larger than a neighborhood collector. It is not. And the centerline curve radie does comply for a neighborhood commercial. So that's kind of the standards. Let me get into the additional issues raised in the appeal. So the appellant is arguing that zoning permit twenty-one dash oh six eight is not final. And I'm going to share with you our finding here. The appellant's arguing that the city should not have begun construction on the roadway because the permit is not final as required in those city's type two procedures. As described above in the findings, the city does not agree that the permit in this case requires a type of, type two review. We have argued that it's a type one review and a type one review would have been completed. It is, it is a ministerial decision that approves a transportation facility that is consistent with the IMP and TSP. In either case, zoning permit twenty-one oh six eight will be a final decision that authorizes the construction of Yates Lane and Devon Loop if it is approved by the city council. As such, the fact that zoning permit twenty-one oh six eight may not be planned yet does not provide a basis to deny the permit. The roads are not described in the TSP and require land use approval. Here, the appellant's arguing that the planning commission erred when it concluded that the proposed roads are described in the TSP and do not require land use approval. For the reasons described above, the proposed roads are expressly described in IMP and that is part of the city's TSP. In figure seven one, that is identified. Whether or not the land use approval is required, the city has in fact reviewed the permit under the type two process leading to a final decision tonight in front of this body by the city council. Accordingly, this argument does not provide a basis to deny the zoning permit because it authorizes construction of a transportation facility that is described in the TSP and was approved under the city's type two procedure. The appellant argues that the roads are subject to the requirements of Boardman Development Code three point four point one hundred. The city does not agree with the, the permit is subject to these standards nonetheless. We have looked at those standards and identified those roads comply with those that we have identified as applicable. And that's what we just kind of went through previously. So this, this next one, the loop road is a minor collector. Staff has concluded that the proposed roadways are a neighborhood collector and comply with all of the relevant standards for that neighborhood collector. The right-of-way, the road width that we're paving, they all are compliant with it being a neighborhood collector. Boardman Development Code three point four point one hundred X requires streetlights every three hundred feet. And I kind of just went through the streetlights then. Streetlights will be, there is actually a streetlight that is paid for by Devon that is at the corner of Yates and Laurel. And so there is a straight streetlight already there in place. And again, as development occurs along those roads, streetlights would be required as part of those development processes. I would ask if the city's attorney, Chris Crane, would have anything he would want to add to what I just went through as part of staff position or if he would rather make any comments as the applicant? Because that was where we will go next.
Thank you, Carla. No, I think that was fine. In fact, I think your staff report probably could stand in for the applicant's presentation since the city is the applicant in this case. And we have concluded that this permit does in fact comply with all applicable standards and criteria. It, it's, it's an important project that was called out in the TSB ten years ago and we are, are moving forward with implementation. So I think we can move ahead with the hearing now. I'll wait to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. So if you have any questions of staff, we'd be happy to answer those.
I have a definition. What is the difference between a minor collector and a neighborhood collector? You told me what a neighborhood collector was, but what's a minor collector? I know it's a, right off the top.
Yeah, I knew I should have brought the TSP in here. It's really about how they, how they feed to the next level of roads. So you have local roads, so your, the street you live on, where your house is, is a local road. It feeds to, it may feed to a neighborhood collector. A neighborhood collector kind of collects those. So, you know, Sam Street and Joe Street and Brenda Street all are collected onto a neighborhood collector, which then moves onto a maybe a major collector, which moves then onto an arterial. And I will be honest, I can't quote for you what all the streets and boardmen are. But in this particular case, the TSP defines that it would, a neighborhood collector would move on to a major collector. And interestingly enough, Laurel Lane from Yates South is a, is a major collector. So it is feeding onto a major collector that then feeds onto an arterial, which I think Columbia may be an arterial.
I was just kind of thinking of an example so I could see in my, get a picture of, I think a neighborhood collector would be like where I live. In a neighborhood where there, there's, would that be like side streets?
Yeah, so I, I think.
I know I put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, and I, again, I don't know chapter and verse what all the streets and boardmen are identified. But you might think of the neighborhood streets that feed on to, like over, over this way, the feed streets that feed on to Oregon Trail or the streets that feed on to, what's the street right down here? No, Wilson's larger than that. So Kincaid and then there's the one.
Willa Fork.
Willa Fork, Willa Fork might be a neighborhood collector. So, you know, you just think about traffic capacity. It's, gets larger. And that's why when you go from a neighborhood collector to a, a minor collector, you have increased right-of-way because you may have increased pavement width needs. So you're, you're going from something that gets, you know, the people that live on the street drive on the street. The next one might be the people that live on the street, on the streets that are joined to that. And maybe some local deliveries are on that street and then the next higher up. And then the next higher up might see more activity because you're connecting, maybe you're connecting neighborhoods with a minor collector. So you know, there's, there's the local streets, the neighborhood collector, which is collecting the neighborhood. And then the neighborhood collectors are, are connecting to the minor collector, which is connecting neighborhoods. Maybe that's one way to think of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any additional correspondence beyond the staff report? I think that's what you asked Chris Crane, right?
Yeah, no, we had no other correspondence.
No other correspondence?
No.
We will now go to the public testimony. The applicant may now present any testimony at this time.
And we've, that basically the staff report is the applicant testimony.
Oh, because we are the applicant.
Yep.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application?
That's clear, because I'd like to see in favor of the appeal.
Okay.
So they'll be next, they'll be, does anyone wish to speak against the application? So that would be
Oh, and that would be her, right?
Yep.
All right, so now we'll listen to anyone who wish, wishes to speak against this application. That would be
Sarah, are you going first?
I'd like to, if that's all right.
You're up.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kiefer, members of the city council. My name for the record is Sarah Mitchell. I'm an attorney with the Calhoun Law Group, representing First John two seventeen L L C and Jonathan Tallman. And our address here is Peel Box one five nine, Lakeview, Oregon nine seven seven three four. And this is an initial matter for the record. We object to the city's failure to provide the required notice of this appeal hearing. We weren't mailed any notice and didn't find out the city council was actually planning on holding the hearing tonight. And so I happened to check the city's website last Friday and looked at the details for tonight's meeting online. Now, I understand that life happens and sometimes these things fall through the cracks, but the city has to follow its own procedures. So just for the record, we object to that. On the merits, the staff report says that this is a land use decision because it approves a transportation facility that's authorized by and consistent with the I A M P, which is part of the T S P in your development code. But that's wrong. It's been said during these proceedings that what is and what isn't a land use decision are issues that lawyers like to hash out. And yeah, that distinction isn't so important for you to decide. But what is important is that you understand that the loop road, as the city has approved it and as it's being constructed, isn't consistent with your, with your T S P or your development code. And for that reason, you have to deny this zoning permit. So the loop road doesn't comply with the street design standards in your code. And that issue is important for First John and Mr. Tallman because even though this specific decision doesn't approve the road on their property west of Laurel Lane, it necessarily determines how the rest of the loop road is going to be approved and constructed on this property in the future, if and when that happens. Because this decision makes the determination that the entire loop road is a neighborhood collector and that apparently the, the road doesn't have to conform to the requirements in the code. So I'd like to share my screen if I'm able to. Looks like it's disabled. Am I able to share my screen? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so this image that you're seeing is a cross section of the loop road from the city's plans. It's in your packets. At least the one that, that I got off of the city's website at page fifty eight. Or it's an exhibit, it says exhibit one to our materials on page twenty four. So you can see that the entire right of way is sixty feet, okay? But the road itself is thirty two feet wide. So you have your twelve foot travel lanes, four foot shoulders on either side, thirty two feet. And here is another image from the plans, again, in your pack, in your packets at page sixty four, or it's our exhibit one, page thirty. It's an example of one section of the road, a typical section of the road on the east side. But shows again that the width is just thirty two feet. We have sixteen and sixteen on either side. Now, your code at B D C three point four point one hundred F says, "Street rights of way and improvement shall conform with the widths in table three point four point one hundred." And here's that table. And for neighborhood collectors, which the decision says the loop road is, we don't agree with that designation, but that's what the decision says that it is. Neighborhood collectors require a minimum roadway, not right of way width, but minimum roadway of thirty eight feet. The road's just too small. And this is super critical because we're talking about big semi trucks using this road as a turnaround to get into that Pacific Pride Station, loop around and get back on a Laurel Lane to get onto the highway. And the city also expects the rest of this area to develop and its own service center commercial, which means it's likely to develop with all sorts of commercial uses, whose traffic, the loop road, is also going to have to accommodate. And because the road isn't conforming your code, it's too small, you have to deny it. So the staff report also tells you that the loop road doesn't need land use approval because service center zone permits projects identified in the adopted T S P not requiring further land use review and approval. And the loop road is identified in the I A M P, which is part of the T S P. But that interpretation isn't correct. What that use permits is transportation projects in your T S P that the T S P says don't require future land use review and approval. And your T S P says nothing about the loop road or any other road for that matter, not needing land use approval. Instead, your code requires that all developments in the city to undergo site design review. And the code defines development super broadly. Defines it as all improvements on a site, including things like paved areas and grading, which describe a road or the construction of a road. And site designer view requires either type two or type three land use review and approval. And it requires findings of compliance with the road standards in chapter three point four, one of which is the minimum roadway with, that I just showed you. And even if site design review doesn't apply directly, the loop road is still subject to these standards by operation of B D C three point four point zero 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 seven B. That says the standard specifications for construction of transportation facilities within the city shall occur in accordance with the standards in chapter three. And the loop road doesn't comply with these standards, including the requirements for roadway width and the requirements for bike lanes, sidewalks and street lights, et cetera, which the decision says is going to be the responsibility of the adjacent property owners when those properties develop or redevelop. But the city can't pass off its obligation to build the road to the required standards to those adjacent property owners. The code says what it says, that the, the city as the developer has to meet those standards. And several of those properties are already developed anyway. And so leaving those additional improvements up to adjacent property owners is just going to create this inconsistent sawtooth pattern of improvements, like sidewalks to nowhere, random patches of street lights. And the loop road should be denied.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak against the application? I think it's Tom and you.
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you guys for your time. Couple weeks ago, we were told that procedures and protocols need to be followed. I agree, I totally agree. As you can see here, there's a disagreement about procedures and protocols not being followed. I want to work with people. When we had that meeting, Mr. Mayor, I was Karen and Barry Byler and you. You guys said on table seven, okay, that it was going to be seventy five feet wide, all right? Now, all of a sudden, it turned to sixty feet wide. That's one of the specifications that I said when you made that offer for seventy five thousand dollars is how wide is the road going to be? I just want to make sure, I want to cross my T's, I want to follow the procedures and protocols. And then finally, I got the, the big file that it said was only sixty. Since then, I, I, from not of the city meetings, I've gotten the public comment. It said you guys wanted seventy five feet, all right? Or sixty feet, and you said at that meeting it was seventy five. Can you understand my confusion on this? I want to go over specifics of the procedures and protocols. And that's why we have all these questions. There are so many questions. But maybe if we can sit down and go over this. Another thing is, this turned into a type one to a type two, okay? On a type two, no, no construction should be done until the expiration date of that final appeal. You guys admitted right here that you guys are, have already approved it, and if it approves tomorrow, it's, it's good as gold. No, you have twenty one days after that, and that's your own procedures and protocols that you're not following. Please, I could go over a laundry list of everything that, that Carla just said there. I don't want to waste your time. On its merits, right here, it, it does not make sense. Let's work together. Let's find a way to work together. If you don't, it's just going to be brought out even further. And it's sad to me that we can't sit down face to face and go over this. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone have any neutral testimony? Does the applicant wish to provide rebuttal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, this is Chris Crane for the city. There are several issues. I've just got a short list and I'll try to get through them. The first, if anybody, Mr. Tallman, his attorneys, anyone in the city did, doesn't get appropriate notice of land use proceeding, then that's something we need, we need to look at. So I appreciate them bringing that to our attention. We will look into that, try to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Yes, things sometimes do fall through the crack, but our job is to make sure that that happens as infrequently as possible. But I am grateful that they did end up getting notice of this hearing and are here tonight. We can hear from them. On the question of the process, the, the interesting thing is we have, in fact, the reason we're here is because the city is following the type two process that is required for design review. We don't believe that this permit required it, and we issued the decision on that basis. But Mr. Tallman, through his attorneys, objected, saying, no, this is development that requires just sign review or type two process. And the reality is, what does it hurt anyone to run it through the type two process? More public participation is always better, and maybe they're right. So we did, we sent out notice, we had a hearing before the planning commission, at which we took public testimony. That the planning commission's decision was appealed, now before the city council, the city has followed its type two process for this permit. So whether or not the decision is correctly ministerial, the city has followed the type two process and provided all of the public participation that is required under any interpretation of the code. So I'm not sure why we're still hearing those objections, to be honest. We, we have followed exactly the process that they demanded we follow, we follow. Under that process, we did, we have looked at and adopted, presented findings, proposed findings on the standards that apply to a road of this type. I can't remember who it was, but somebody asked, what's the difference between a neighborhood collector and a minor collector? And the difference is six feet of, of right of way in table, I think it's three point four point one hundred F. A minor collector has a sixty foot right of way, a, I'm sorry, neighborhood collector has a sixty foot right of way, a minor collector has a sixty eight foot right of way. I don't unfortunately know which roads exactly that, that aligns with in the city. But the findings go through all of the relevant criteria, therefore, in chapter three point four point one hundred for a transportation standard and explain why they are all met. The only one we heard tonight that Mr. Tallon, through his attorney, argue is not met, is the width standard. And frankly, it, table three point four point one hundred F uses the word roadway, but doesn't define what that is. And I think if you, and Ms. Mitchell looked at the road surface and said, hey, that's only thirty two feet, your standard is thirty eight feet. So therefore, it doesn't meet the standard and you have to die the application. Yeah, I think if you look at the road bed and include the road bed and not just the road surface in the calculation of the roadway width, you'll find that it, it does in fact meet the thirty eight foot standard. So the other thing that I, I think is important to point out and why we conclude that the standard for streetlights and sidewalks and everything don't apply and that only apply when the prop, when property develops that requires transportation improvements, is if we put in sidewalks, for example, along the entire length of this loop road, Devon Lane and, and Yates Lane and Devon Loop, we don't know what's going to develop on those adjacent properties, and a lot of that sidewalk's going to end up just getting torn out. And sidewalks and curbs and who knows what kind of infrastructure under the pavement would have to get torn out and rebuilt when those properties develop. It makes absolutely no sense to spend public resources on infrastructure that's just going to get torn out. So that's one of the big reasons we conclude that criteria applies when the adjacent property develops. It also doesn't make sense for the city to build sidewalks and then burden the adjacent property owner with the obligation to maintain those sidewalks when that property isn't even developed yet. So we've concluded, based on the text and the apparent purpose of those standards, that they do not apply to mere construction of roadway. Oh, there's one other thing I wanted to point out. The application in this case was filed last year by former Public Works Director, who is no longer with us. And it incorrectly listed tax lots that are not part of the road project, including Mr. Tallman's, and that rightfully got their attention. So I just want to make it clear on the record that this permit only applies to and authorizes construction of the west loop of the loop road that's called for in the I A M P. I'm sorry, that does remind me of, of one other thing. Ms. Mitchell testified that this is important because this road determines the standards for the entire loop road. And I absolutely don't know why that's the case. The city, for a variety of reasons, could determine to build a western loop in some point in the future to different standards. Maybe it makes sense to build that to a minor standard. It's only a eight foot difference in the right of way width. There's absolutely no reason to believe that this loop road necessarily firmly and finely determines the standards for the western loop. You may decide that to build that to different standards, depending on what's important in the future. So frankly, that's just a red herring. Other than that, there's not much I have to add. It's other than the fact that this roadway is part of the interchange access management plan that was adopted by the city, by the county and by ODOT ten years ago to provide for future development of this area. It's an important piece of infrastructure for the city. These kinds of plans are often adopted and then they sit there and nobody does anything with them. The city of Boardman, in this case, is in fact implementing the, the plan that you promised to implement ten years ago when you adopted the I A M P. So I don't have anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions the council wishes to ask at this time?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, Chris, you said, you said east initially, you said west initially and oh, yeah, I just want to make sure we're on the right side of Laurel Lane, for the improvements are on the east side.
I tried to make that clear in the ordinance, in the resolution and the findings, that this only authorizes construction of the eastern loop, not the western loop. It doesn't affect the Tolman property, for example, or any other property owner on the west side of Laurel Lane.
Again, are there any other question, any questions by the City Council at this time? Well, he asked for questions. So I was, but it's not later.
And that was actually rebuttal. That was rebuttal. So, yeah.
Correct, correct.
Having hearing done, this public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Does the staff need to respond to a question or issue raised by the testimony?
I don't believe so. I think we handled that in the rebuttal.
Does the City Council have any questions to the staff?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask a few questions.
Yes.
I would like to get clarification, if possible, on those notice procedures, if they were met and are not, what that was. That's definitely worth looking into. Is that something that we address now, or?
We can do that now. I can absolutely, yeah, we did provide notice for this on June seventh. Notice did go to the Tolmans. Our obligation is to send notice. It's not our obligation to assure that obligation is received or that notice is received. I will state that we did not notice on that date Mr. Tolman's attorney. And we probably should have. She's been involved with this process. We also post the notice to the website on the day that it is published and mailed to adjoining landlords. So it was also posted on the website on that same date, which, what did I just say, June seventh?
June seventh.
June seventh.
You said, you said it, you sent it to Mr. Tolman?
Yes, it was sent to Mr. Tolman. Thirty people. It went out to thirty people.
Oh, thirty people.
Yeah. Oh, what, three, six? Let me count again. Three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, twenty-four.
The council may be interested, though, that state law does, in fact, require mailed notice to all property owners within a certain distance of a development site. And so that's what Ms. McLean is referring to. And we maintain a list of the people to whom notice was sent. But state law also recognizes that we can't guarantee that mail will always arrive as intended. And so the fact that we mailed notice meets the city's legal obligations. But anytime somebody claims they didn't get notice, we do, in fact, look into it and try to make sure that we at least met our legal obligations, did everything we could to make sure that they get notice.
I do have a few other questions, if I may. In respect to the width of the road being thirty-eight versus thirty-two, my printouts and online are a little hard to read, so forgive me if I can't make the numbers out. In regards to thirty-eight feet being required versus the thirty-two feet being proposed, I understand there's some concern about a semi-truck being able to function on that space and possibly turn around. And as Mr. Crane mentioned, we're talking about the road bed on the sides of that section. Is that something, then, that drive-on potentially?
The travel lanes are more than adequate for a truck to travel that road in both directions. It's plenty wide that two trucks could pass. It should also be noted that with this design, Yates on that side becomes a ride-in, ride-out only. So truck traffic will be able to turn in from a right-hand turn, and they will be able to depart going right. But to turn left, they will have to follow Yates up Devon Loop to the south and then do their left-hand turn. So part of the I A M P, just to help you understand why that is, the part of the I A M P is to assure that the city meets the distance requirements established in Oregon Transportation Law about those fully functioning intersections being thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet on the interchange. There was an exception granted because even where Devon Loop is going to connect to Laurel Lane does not fully meet the thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet. But the original I A M P grants an exception because to do that, we'd have to go under the B P A lines. And so there was an understanding that adjacent to the B P A lines would be sufficient and that variance is granted as part of the I A M P. So if you want to turn left onto Laurel Lane from Yates, you can't. You're going to have to, I mean, so you have to think about how you're going to make those, and that was a specific intent behind the design of the Loop Roads. And it's kind of what you're seeing at Main Street, too. We're trying to figure out how to make those connections, both on the north side of the interchange and the south side of the interchange, and meet those distance requirements of thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet. Maybe more than you wanted, but I want to make sure that.
No, I just want to confirm, then, that based on the finding of fact, the staff does agree that we are in compliance.
The staff absolutely agrees we're in compliance. And understand that, again, there will be development that, there will be further improvement to the road as development occurs that will continue to add the curb, the gutter, kind of the ribbon to curbing and the sidewalk. And those are factors that account into a width as well. And when you look at a standard, the standard also often includes the full scope of what's going to be in that right-of-way, not just the pavement. Yeah.
Lastly, if I may, whether or not I defer to Mr. Crane as to whether or not those called out with conflicts of interest need to speak to those at this time.
Thank you. The short answer is no, legally, they don't. The law says if you want to appeal this decision, you have to raise an issue now, or you can't raise it later. So Mr. Tolman raised the issue. If he wants to appeal the decision, raise it later. He certainly can. But no one on the council is obligated to respond to that. That said, they certainly can if they wish. I will say, I don't want to address conflict of interest because I'm not in position to do that. If the member of the council who was called out wants to address that, he or she can, if they want, don't have to. But on the issue of ex parte communications, people, if Mr. Tolman requested a meeting and was denied, that's because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding and state law prohibits ex parte communications. And so I always advise my clients, do not communicate with folks outside of, except for staff, when there's a quasi-judicial matter pending in front of you, because it raises the issue of ex parte communications. Once the final decision is issued, you're free to talk to whomever you want. But while the matter is pending before the City Council, you have to avoid, or you certainly should avoid, ex parte communications, which may explain why folks were unwilling to meet, at least while this was pending before the city. Does that help?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Is there any other questions from the City Council to staff? All right, so we go to the part where it's a commission deliberation. Is there any discussion by the City Council at this time? All right, having hearing done, there's no questions. So I will go to the part, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to deny appeal EP twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-four and approve zoning permit Z P two-one-dash-zero-six-eight.
I have a motion, and I have a second by council person. Well, it's.
Pearson and Prophet.
There you go.
There, we'll leave it at that. And we'll go to a roll call, please.
Who was the second? Okay, Councilperson.
Yes.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Councilor Prophet.
Yes.
And Mayor Fisher.
Yes. So you have a.
There is a resolution as well to memorialize your decision. It is in, I think it's under the cabinet, is resolutions. It is a resolution to deny the appeal and approve zoning, the zoning permit. There's a variety of whereas's there that kind of references what we've just done and has therefore be resolved, two items. I'm happy to read any part of that that you would like or in its entirety.
If I wanted to move, I could say I move to approve. You absolutely could. Deny. I'm trying, there's like five of them here.
I think at this point, you would be the very bottom one, the first item.
So adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution. Thank you.
So I'd like to move to adopt resolution twelve-dash-twenty-two as presented. I have a second thought.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? We'll go to a roll call, please.
Councilperson.
Yes.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
Councilor Prophet.
Yes.
Yes. So we're at a point where we need to pause our City Council meeting and go into executive session. One-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two-E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. And one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two-I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member. Mr. Mayor, can you read the motion sheet? To be read prior to the executive session, the city of Orton will hold an executive session meeting for the permissible reason or reason stated below under O R S one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-two. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session as permissible. Decision meetings are not subject to H B two-five-six-zero. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room in person and open the public virtual Zoom meeting link again. Thank you.
Just a request for the three counselors on Zoom to come by City Hall at the earliest convenience to sign the resolution. It will have you free to sign tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that would be Junior, Katie, and Isaac. Did you catch that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, will do.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we're going to close, are we just, we're going to log out of this and then go into a new one?
Yes. We're actually going to go into the other room and start.